City Clerk, to please call the role.
Councilmember Little is absent at this time, but we do expect him shortly. Councilmember Sander?
Here.
Councilmember Budge?
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Gatewood?
Here.
Mayor Pulapati?
Here. I'm going to ask the City Clerk to announce the meeting's video recording and playback schedules.
The meeting of the Rancho Cordova City Council is recorded with closed captioning. The recording will be cable cast on Metro Cable, Channel 14, the Local Government Affairs Channel, on the Comcast and DirecTV U-verse cable systems. The recording will also be video streamed at metro14live.saccounty.gov. Today's meeting will replay on Thursday, July 10th, at 9:00 a.m., and Saturday, July 12th, at 7:00 p.m. on Metro Cable, Channel 14. Once posted, the recording of this meeting can be viewed on demand at youtube.com/metrocable14 and on the city of Rancho Cordova's website.
I'm going to ask Daryl to lead the pledge, and I invite the audience to remain standing for the invocation, which will be led by Chaplain Silvia Espinoza-Pool with the Law Enforcement Chaplaincy,
Ready? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is the chaplain here? Walter. I invite Walter Little to please give the invocation.
Hey, I'm the backup, so that's okay, too. Let us pray. Bless us, Lord, if it may be, in all our endeavors. If it may not be, give us the strength to encounter what is to come, that we may be brave in peril, constant in tribulation, temperate in wrath, and in all changes in fortune, loving to one another, as the clay is to the potter and the windmill to the wind. We beg of you this help and mercy. Amen.
Amen.
God bless.
Thank you. Next, we're going to move on to our presentation. I'll ask the City Clerk to please read the title, and I'll call on Steve Ramos for the presentation.
The annual mosquito and West Nile virus update will be presented by the Sacramento Yolo Mosquito and Vector Control District. Welcome.
Thank you.
We're pulling up your presentation.
Oh, okay. Am I looking the wrong spot? There we go. Thank you. Perfect. Okay. Well, thank you for having me tonight. And my name is Steve Ramos. I'm an Assistant Manager with Saculio Mosquito and Vector Control District located in Elk Grove. We also have another facility in Woodland. We're a dual-county district. And yeah, I'm here today to present just on what our plans are for this upcoming year of mosquito control and why it matters to the community and citizens, of course, of Rancho Cordova. So our mission, of course, is to provide safe, effective, economical mosquito and vector control. What that really means is, is we want to allow the folks within the county to enjoy their life without being harassed by mosquitoes, enjoy the backyard barbecues, enjoy all the outdoors activities that are available to people without just being harassed and bitten constantly by mosquitoes. And even more importantly, we want to protect the public from the diseases that they can vector and carry through their bites. So one of our main goals is to get out and just let the public know what we're doing, who we are, the services that we have available to them, and some of the activities that might be taking place this year. So mosquito season is definitely here. Now it's July. It typically starts in the late spring and goes into about late October or so. That's when the weather starts to cool, and we'll see the mosquitoes kind of decrease. But spring brings them with the rains. I'd say now in July, those spring rains and water pools have mostly dried up. So now we're looking more at irrigation, rice farming that's going on. And so our goal is to get out, find those sources that create mosquitoes. The larvae breed in water, most definitely stagnant water. That could be in backyards. It can be in ponds. It could be in swimming pools. And then these mosquitoes have the ability, of course, to carry and transmit West Nile virus. That continues to be the biggest threat that we see here in the state of California and also right here in the Sacramento County area as well. There is growing concern now for more exotic diseases such as Dengue, Chikungunya, Zika. I'm sure most of you have heard of those diseases as well. We do have an invasive mosquito called Aedes albopictus and Aedes aegypti that have been found here in our area. So now we are doing more control amongst those mosquito populations as well. And I'll talk about that in a little bit. This is just an example of the different mosquito breeding habits that we have and that we check out there. Sacramento and Yolo County, we're a big rice-growing community, typically somewhere in the range of 40,000 to 45,000 acres of rice a year. That mosquito site or mosquito breeding site is really easy to recognize, big gigantic green fields full of water. We know about those. The more difficult ones are like some of you, some of the pictures you see here on the slide, backyard swimming pools, dog bowls, bird baths. Those are the ones that we're actually going out actively working with residents in the communities, knocking on doors. They call us, let us know if they have a mosquito issue, and we can do inspections around their homes and their properties to help them identify areas that might be breeding mosquitoes. We have an integrated mosquito management approach that we use in our districts, kind of five-pronged. The number one and most valuable, I believe, is that public information that we do. We go to many of the community events. I believe we did one here in Rancho Cordova earlier this year called IFES, I believe it was called. So we had a booth there with our Public Information Officer that was giving out information. We attend all kinds of events throughout both counties, throughout the year, just getting that information out there. We do a lot of school education events. And, you know, we have, of course, our website that has all the information about our district on there as well. The second approach is surveillance. We literally go out and put traps throughout the whole area of both counties. So we're looking at those mosquitoes. We're looking at the numbers. Somebody has the great job of counting those mosquitoes to let us know how many there are out there, either nightly or weekly. And we test those mosquitoes, too, to see if they're carrying any viruses, viruses like West Nile virus. The second approach to surveillance is also we monitor the dead birds that we find within the county. West Nile virus is a bird disease. The birds are the reservoir. They carry it. Mosquitoes bite the bird. And then if they bite a human, they can actually contract that disease. So that's another part of our surveillance. Biological control is where we use a lot of our fish, our biological means of control for mosquitoes. You can see the fish there in the middle of the slide. They are amazing. Yeah. It's echoed. That's how good they are. They're really good. We use them in many of our rice fields, and we actually use them in a lot of our green pools, too, for vacant homes. Ecological management is another approach where we actually go out and work with landowners, private and public landowners and land managers to help them identify mosquito breeding that might be on their property, give them ideas and some resources on how to eliminate those breeding sources as well. And then control operations is our boots on the ground. Those are the folks that we see out in the communities like Rancho Cordova every day, checking the storm basins, checking the drains, checking the ditches, and going and working with the community. This is a nice snapshot of what our West Nile virus activity looked like last year. Here in Rancho Cordova and the city limits, we did have a couple of West Nile positive mosquito samples that we did find here within the city limits. So that's something that we're always aware of and concerned for. Typically, when we find those, we go out, we produce more surveillance opportunities around those areas, and we check all the sources that are known and work with residents to see if we can find new sources as well. We didn't find any dead birds within the city boundaries, but you can see just right outside, in the Carmichael area, there were a couple of dead birds that we also found that did carry West Nile virus as well. Another thing I wanted to kind of bring your attention to was the human cases, which is on the left of the slide. So that's for the state. That's a snapshot of the state's total human cases for West Nile virus, which was 129 reported. Those are typically the more serious cases of West Nile virus, which are called neuroinvasive, can lead to death. They experience much more of the severe symptoms. Many people that contract West Nile virus, they don't ever report it. It can be something like a seasonal flu, where you just kind of feel like, oh, I'm a little under the weather. I'm going to go home, have some soup, relax. And the fact that they were actually, that they had contracted West Nile virus was never reported. So they say for every case of neuroinvasive confirmed, there's about 30 to 70 cases that are unreported of West Nile virus. So it's a severely under-reported disease. This is what we were talking about earlier, which is the detection of invasive mosquitoes. And so Aedes albopictus and Aedes aegypti, which is our main concern, egypti, they are invasive. They love biting humans. Most of our other mosquito species like are like birds. They are more attracted to biting birds. These mosquitoes are not. They are aggressive day biters. They're very good vectors of exotic diseases such as Dengue and Zika. Here in California, last year in Southern California, there was 18 confirmed cases of local transmission of Dengue. So that is a concern as it can make its way up north to our area. So we are doing more and more inspections. You can see that we found Aedes aegypti detections here in Rancho Cordova. So we deploy specific control strategies for these because they can breed in as little as a bottle cap of water. They're very, very hard to find, very hard to control. They love cryptic sources. One of the ways that we are going to be combating these invasive mosquitoes is something called SIT, or sterile insect technique. It's a great technique because we're using mosquitoes to control mosquitoes. So one of the things that we're doing is using a Wolbachia-infected mosquito, which is a naturally occurring bacterium. We release male infected, male Wolbachia-infected mosquitoes in areas that have these invasive mosquitoes. They are basically sterile. So once they mate with the mosquito, that female mosquito will no longer produce viable eggs. Mosquitoes only mate once in the wild. So once that mating occurs with a Wolbachia-infected male mosquito, they will not, no longer be able to lay eggs. So we'll be trying that out this year. Actually, tomorrow, we'll be doing our first release of sterile insect technique mosquitoes in the southern Natomas area. So moving forward for our district, we want to explore the use of SIT and other control methods. That's something that we're really excited about to see how this goes with this pilot program. We're going to continue, of course, our surveillance and control efforts. We want to explore, of course, more outreach opportunities in the affected communities, which all communities really have mosquitoes, so that's everywhere we can go. And of course, encourage the public to report day-biting mosquitoes. That helps us understand where these mosquitoes might be breeding and where they are causing concern. One of the ways that they can do that, the public can go to our website, which is fightthebite.net. They can actually request service. We'll come out, do a yard inspection for free. They can report dead birds to our website as well. Or they can just call and ask us questions about some of the processes that we're using to control mosquitoes in their areas. And that's all I have. Anybody have any questions?
So we don't have MedFly anymore?
We don't have it here yet, but it is kind of making a resurgence in certain areas, but not here.
I mean, that seems like a 20-year-old problem.
Yes, yeah.
But it kind of went away.
It did, through the use of sterile insect technique. That was one of the main ways that they battled MedFly and reduced its numbers to basically be almost nonexistent. But there is somewhat of a resurgence in some areas.
So then basically, you know that that particular method really does work.
Absolutely.
Thank you. And yes, our colleague, Bob McGarvey, has reported in the past about a couple of really significant neuroinvasive cases here in the Sacramento area.
Yeah.
But not like in the last year, I don't think.
Yeah, I don't know if we had any neuroinvasives here last year. I have to look.
Yeah, super.
So mosquitoes are bird food.
They like to feed on birds.
Yeah. Well, birds also eat mosquitoes.
Sure, sure.
So the question is, if you eliminate too many mosquitoes, are you hurting the bird population? Which leads you to the next question of, is there another way to deal with the mosquito-borne illness other than killing the mosquito?
Yeah, that's always a question that we get from so many folks in the public. And, you know, it's kind of interesting because one of the main things I've learned throughout my time here at the district is it's mosquito control and not elimination. There are so many mosquito breeding sites, and even with all of our efforts, we're catching thousands upon thousands of mosquitoes daily in many of the areas throughout both counties. Our goal is to keep those numbers in check so they don't get out of balance. And then that disease concern rises for certain areas. So elimination of the mosquitoes, I don't think is ever going to be feasible and not really even our goal. Many of the birds and bats, that's always been a big concern for folks, too. What will the bats eat? And they've done some different looks and studies. They make up a very, very small portion of those bats and birds diets. So I don't think we'll ever get to a point where we affect them that much in the food chain.
David, you probably have magpies on the river?
We do.
That's cool. We moved off the river after, I mean, before the, that latest bird flu thing really took out the magpies and the crows and whatnot. But we, we have a very healthy population of crows and jaybirds. So obviously, they've come back. This is good.
They are. And that's one of the other concerns with these mosquitoes that like to bite the birds. They can decimate bird populations, like happening in Hawaii right now as well. So that's one of the concerns as well.
Well, it did around here 10 years ago, maybe?
Yeah, it definitely did. I mean, we had massive flocks of magpies.
Yeah.
Just decimated.
They just disappeared.
More than decimated.
No, thank you for that. I really appreciate it. You know, Jaws became popular, but, you know, I think more people died from mosquitoes than ever from sharks.
That is true. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you. I will now call upon Loriann Carl to give an update. Loriann Carl and team to give an update.
And friends.
Oh, yeah, I got to lower this one down a little. So good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, and guests. My name is Loriann Carl, and I am here to present the highlights to our Second Annual Spring Service Day that we held on May 17th this past year. And I'm going to introduce some folks to say a few words here in a minute. But I do want to just share a couple of things about the importance and the significance of our Spring Service Day. So we were able to, the purpose of it was to mobilize the community to volunteer in both existing and new service projects throughout the city of Rancho Cordova, highlighted local nonprofits in fostering ongoing volunteerism, building momentum and encouragement to volunteer in the community, and supporting youth by engaging them in meaningful community projects that foster leadership, civic responsibility, and a lifelong commitment to service. And I think we were able to do that. We were able to complete 21 projects. We had 347 volunteers, which equated to 1,795 hours of service. As you can see on this slide, we were able to really provide a lot of cleanup. We had art projects. We had our Seroptimist and Project Sixty Eighty. Were able to do essential backpack and comfort kits. We had our Chamber of Commerce had projects, FCCP. The projects were, we had, we had actually accomplished a lot more this year than we did last year. And we were, we were able to utilize Volunteer Central, which I'm actually happy to announce that we have hit 32 organizations listed on Volunteer Central with 1,350 volunteers now on Volunteer Central using it every day. So I'm very proud of all of the partnerships that we had, our volunteers that we couldn't have done this without, and our project leaders. And right now, I do want to introduce two of our title sponsors. So Anne Descalzo, the co-founder of the Raz Group, and Terrence McNamara, our Regional General Manager of Atlas Disposal, to say a few words.
Thank you. Hello, Council. It's wonderful to be here and share about the experience. The Raz Group has been in the city of Rancho Cordova since the end of 2023. And so since this Community Service Day launched, we've been a supporter of the day. And I am proud to announce that we'll be embedding it into our quarterly lineup of volunteer events across all of our companies that are housed in our space down the road. One of the most important things about being involved in Service Day for us is giving back to the community, and that really starts with how the businesses show up here. Our core value of being connected and driven to make things happen really showcases what this day is all about with how people show up, roll up their sleeves, and have a little fun. We're making a positive impact. So very grateful to support and to continue on with that support and see this evolve and grow as the years go by.
Good evening. Well, I'm glad to have the opportunity to speak tonight. Terrence McNamara from Atlas Disposal. New to Atlas Disposal, but not new to Rancho Cordova, right? I've been a part of this community for a long time. And I really think that Spring Service Day is representative of what the Rancho Cordova community is about, right? The people coming out and doing good things. It was inspiring to see people come together in service. And there was a lot of energy and, as Loriann pointed out, a really tangible impact that is so great. Atlas was honored to be one of the title sponsors and to help support the day's logistics. 82 bags of trash is an easy day for us, but glad to, glad to participate, no doubt. But also just to stand shoulder to shoulder with so many people who care so deeply about this city, deeply enough to come out on their Saturday morning and participate in a thing like this. So, you know, the spirit of volunteerism in Rancho Cordova is alive and well, and it keeps this city moving. I'm also involved in another large organization that has a lot of volunteers in the region, and many of them come, most of them, in fact, come from Rancho Cordova, and we're very grateful for that also. So again, thank you for inviting us to participate. This is something that we're making a part of our, of our regular program, and we're happy to participate again.
Thank you both. I also want to take a second to thank city staff who came out on Saturday. We had neighborhood services that did some really amazing houses for some animals and critters. And we also had our Public Works team out that were arm to arm, shoulder to shoulder, picking up trash as well, and a lot of other staff. I also want to thank, for anyone watching as well, all of the volunteers that were out that day. It wouldn't even be possible without you. And so I do want to introduce Janine Anderson from Lincoln Village, who was a volunteer that day, to say a few words as well.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Councilmembers, and just for, you know, doing, having a vision to do something that brings the community together. I know especially for our neighborhood, Lincoln Village, we were excited to do the art project. And Ian, he always came and was, you know, really rallying for the support, and it was something that my neighborhood looked forward to doing. So much so that we were, you know, the information was getting out, not only just to people within Rancho, but also we had supporters come from Folsom. We had supporters come from Sacramento, Elk Grove, all over, who was very intrigued about what we were doing and excited. And also Micah for coming out and slopping some paint with us. Him and his wife, I mean. But we never know, just like as a community, how important that is to see our city officials and leaders out there in the community and being so personable and real. And so just thank you for your continued support. It was my first year volunteering and, as well as some other newer ITLV members. And we look forward to the next. And Joe, he was also really supportive about, you know, helping to get the word out. So we do appreciate that, Mr. Little.
And then please stand if you're in the room and you had a part of Spring Service Day because I do want to acknowledge everyone who had a part of Spring Service Day. Please stand, just so that you can understand how many people were involved. And we appreciate every single minute. Thank you. And now we'll end on a high note. If you all could show the video, that would be fantastic.
Today, we're celebrating our Second Annual Service Day, and this is when the residents, people of all ages from different neighborhoods, come out to help beautify the city in public spaces. And we're having about 300 people coming up from all across the area to support one another.
Well, we are taking on projects all over our city. Regardless of what skill you have, there's a place for you in our Spring Service Day.
This is all volunteers. So what you're looking at, there's no paid people here. This is all people that care about Rancho citizens. And this just shows you how much we actually are involved in our neighbors.
Giving back to the community that we work in is very important because we care about where we're located and the work that happens here. And we want to make a meaningful contribution to that.
This group of people, this community, always comes together to make their city a better place. It's inspiring, and I wish other municipalities could do stuff like this.
Volunteerism is important in Rancho Cordova because it makes you feel like this is your city. You're giving back to where you live.
Today, we have the city volunteers out, and we're helping us paint the barn, and we're cleaning up the area and making it look nicer. So the park down here by the river, everything just makes for a nicer environment for people to come out to. The people coming in to help and do this, The people coming in to help and do this, it's great because you kind of see that they really want to be here. And the feeling of giving back to your community and the places where you spend your time, there's nothing like it.
We're here at the Medina Home doing home improvements. It's a young family who applied to our program to have some uplift, some help with their homes. I think this morning, coming together with hundreds of volunteers was just phenomenal.
And it just feels good to help people today, but just the camaraderie, watching everyone work and teamwork, just enjoying every bit of it.
We were painting crosswalks. We did sunset on the river and some turtles that you can see out here. We've had tons of families out here. It's so fun having the kids, and these are really accessible projects for them, so they're out painting and they're having a good time. And then they get to walk by and see their artwork on the street.
I mean, it really feels like the community coming together. But our culture, our history in the city of Rancho Cordova is built on volunteerism, and we really want to celebrate that.
This is a family-oriented community, and so it's really great to be able to do something as a family. The kids are out here having a great time, and there's no wrong way to paint.
We had so many great sponsors this year, I mean, more than even last year. The sponsors are what made this possible. Their funds directly allowed us to buy all these materials, make this happen. We're all doing what we can to make our city even better on our own, giving up our time. So next year, next year, be here.
Well, thank you really, truly, from the bottom of my heart. This was a project that started out of the leadership class, so we'll start with Diane on that one, for starting the leadership class. But, you know, there's so much more, like you said, that, you know, it's more than last year, Lorian, and I think it'll grow bigger and bigger. In fact, I've had somebody ask me over the weekend if we could do it twice a year. These are feel-good events, guys, you know? You feel good, we feel good, Rancho Cordova feels good. So, you know, twice a year is also welcome, colleagues.
I'll second the motion by the mayor. You know, these are things that make us a really special place to live. Rancho Cordova's always, I think, had a little bit of that. I don't know where it comes from, could be Air Force, could be Aerojet. Something in our community DNA makes us pretty community-oriented and pretty volunteer-oriented. And we see that in all the various things that we do, whether it's Chamber of Commerce or Community Council, you get lots of volunteers. But I think it's really important to say, when we have the opportunity, that great cities aren't made by great municipal employees or great elected officials. Great cities are the product of great people who live there and who care about each other and who do something about that. Cities, municipalities, elected officials are part of it, but the biggest part of it are all the citizens out there doing what they can to improve their community. So this is a focus on that, really. And I just want to thank you, Lorian, for organizing it, and all city staff for participating in it. Really, really great stuff, and the more we talk about that and the more we do this, the greater our community becomes. So thank you.
Thank you. Okay. With that, we celebrate another, well, another day in this wonderful universe. We're celebrating the birthdays of the youngest member of our council, Joe Little, and myself, not so old, but it was my birthday too. So, okay, we're going to recognize the birthdays of myself and Joe Little. Thank you.
So the not old and the not so old?
Well, moms are never old, we're always young.
And here we go. It's birthday scene time. Ready? One, two, three. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Everybody! Happy birthday, dear Joe Little.
Old and not too old. So old. Happy birthday to you.
Thank you, thank you, everyone. I will now move to public comment. Members of the public wishing to address the council for any matter not on the agenda may do so at this time by completing and submitting a speaker card to the city clerk. For items on the agenda, speakers will be called by the mayor at the point on the agenda when the item will be heard. Speakers are encouraged to keep comments to three minutes or less and to state name and community of residence. Under the provisions of the California Government Code, the city council is prohibited from discussing or taking immediate action on any item not on the agenda unless it can be demonstrated to be of an emergency nature or the need to take immediate action arose after the posting of the agenda. I'll ask the city clerk to announce public comment.
Yes, I'm going to start with John Prokop. I don't know if he's still here, but is he still in the council chambers? No. Okay. Next, we'll start with Larry Ladd. Following Larry will be Diane Rogers and then Darrell Langwell. Larry Ladd, you'll have up to three minutes.
All right. For those of you who don't know me, I, for 25 years, have dealt with the chemicals in our groundwater and keep up on the science on that. And I have good news and I have bad news. The bad news is, you probably all know, the explosion over Yolo County, which took one of the chemicals I track, perchlorate, and put it all over the place. So I had the opportunity to talk to the mosquito guy and say, if you see a shift of St. Louis encephalitis, you let me know. And that's the bad news. And I gave these maps here, these are for Mr. Little, because he's new. He's going like, who is this guy? What, where is he coming from? So these have been all my-
Oh, I know who you are, I get all your emails.
Well, that's, you know, the reason you get those emails is because we're supposed to go to homeowners associations, I'm supposed to talk with doctors and nurses, but they changed the rules and didn't do that, so you guys get to be the lucky recipients and all that stuff. However, that leads me to the good news. With the UC Davis Clinic going in, there's a whole bunch of doctors and nurses who are moving right next to some of the hottest, and I don't mean that in a positive way, properties at Aerojet. And so I was telling my physician about that. He's been my physician for six years. I go to the Folsom Clinic, and he said, there's a super fun site there? I'm alarmed, right? So it's like, good, well, cats. So what I am doing is talking with doctors about how they get the right measures to see if people are exposed or not. With TCE, the kidney and the liver is easy, the bone marrow not so much. And since I'm old and have to go see a endocrine, or a blood person every six months, we have a nice, long talk about what the latest science is. That's what this is all about. So I just want to, last thing I want to lift you is, these are the issues after the explosion and I, when I talked with Public Health in Yolo County, said there's these four things that are weird in the next month or two after the explosion. If it's a mystery to you, I might be able, on the basis of all the places I've visited over the years and what I've observed, and these four things are, lame horses, not lame ducks, Garrett, but lame horses and cows. And the next thing is the St. Louis encephalitis, and I just got to touch base with him. It's been, it was displaced by West Nile, but it has a heritage and I think it's linked to perchlorate. And then childhood diseases, last but not least, first disease and fifth disease. David, do you know what first disease is?
You mean fifth disease?
First disease and fifth disease. If there was a fifth disease, there had to be a first disease. It was measles. Measles is first disease. Fifth disease is the second one. And I told him, if you have measles, of course, that's going to be the news right away, but if you have kids with fifth disease, that, which is very common and may be coming by, that have omen problems, you have bad reactions to that.
Please wrap up your comments.
Well, I will. So that's the latest, and what I'll be telling them, the final comment, is it may have something, if you have mysteries like that pop up around here, it may have something to do with the human beta defense into. Thanks.
Next speaker is Diane Rogers.
Thanks for wearing the Fourth of July shirt, Larry. Larry, you didn't flip around the poster.
I did what?
The poster out front.
Oh, yes.
Hopefully it won't take the three minutes.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I am Diane Rogers, President, CEO, the Rancho Cordova Area Chamber of Commerce. I just come before you today to offer my thanks and appreciation. On June 26th, we held our 14th Annual Business Expo, and I'm pleased to let you tell you that we, when we started, it was 25 vendors in the American River Rooms, and now we're taking over basically the entire parking lot on the north side. This year, we went from 20, well, last year, we had about 68, and this year, we had 96 vendors. So very pleased with that progress. But the reason I want to come before you is to offer my deep appreciation to a department within the city that perhaps goes often underappreciated or overlooked, and that is your facilities department. We could not put on this event without them. We couldn't do the work that we do and offer the services that we do without the support of facilities. They are there to block off the parking, they are there to communicate with the city employees, and they are there at that urgent need when someone shows up, and they do, that says they registered for the expo and we haven't planned for them, and offering us and finding an extra set of tables and chairs. So I just want to let you know how much I appreciate their work. I appreciate it. It's a year-round relationship that we have with them, but this one is particularly something I'd like to draw your attention to and express my appreciation. Thank you very much.
Next speaker is Darrell Langwell.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. I wanted to come up here and talk about community services. Few days back, the wife and I were on our morning walk, and as we got near Fetter Spiel Park, there was a pile of trash on, in the gutter. I made a phone call, one phone call, came back by that place, no longer than four hours later, it was clean as a whistle. So kudos to community services for their rapid action on that, to that matter. Thank you.
Mayor, pull a party. That's all the public comment that we have.
Now, thank you, Darrell, for coming up and sharing good news. Usually, you know, people come up when they have something to complain, so I love it. We're going to move on to council members for their report. I will start with Councilmember Little.
Illegal fireworks. Getting worse every year. Lived through it again in Lincoln Village a few nights ago. It's been all week. What a mess. What a mess.
Councilmember Sanders.
Legal fireworks, July 3rd and 4th. Huge success. Probably all the records broken. I'll leave those for Shelley to actually announce, but I suspect, based on a lot of years out there, the parade, I think, was outstanding. Concerts were great. I think this was the most hitch-free event in recent years. You know, no big precipitous problem occurred, so that was, that's, that's pretty cool. It's also sort of a testament to how smooth we are getting at running events like this, that that happens. So I think the media, we'll probably get a report on that at some point too, but the media impressions must have been massive, because I could not listen to radio or TV without seeing Rancho Cordova mentioned. And the Fourth of July, which is a pretty cool thing, saw the mayor a lot on some video.
At six in the morning.
Yeah, so she had the duty of being the Rancho Cordova mayor on the Fourth of July when you're, you know, I warned her about a few things, like I warned her about the paddle boats and the slide, and I gave her advice about the Ferris wheel, right? You want to be prepared, because what the TV camera might want you to do, you may not want to be video doing. But it's all in good fun. It's all in good fun, all promotes the city. Let's see, I was going to report on one other big event, which is actually kind of two events. We had two giant track meets at Cordova High, and on those same weekends, we had softball tournaments, swim tournaments, swim meets, dance competitions, we had trains running in the park, we had things like athlete physicals going on for Folsom-Cordova athletes. It was thousands and thousands and thousands of people at Cordova High, Mills Middle School, and in Hagan Park, at all of these events, two weekends in a row, again, without major incidents. It's a near miracle, I think, that we can pull this off. But from the events that I saw up close, it was enormously positively received, and I hope our hoteliers were very happy with the, with the impact we had on them. So congratulations to all those entities who did that, girls' softball, Rancho Cordova Track Club, the swim teams at, in Hagan Park, and the dance organization, and the live steamers, of course, who pulled off all that with some coordination.
Thank you. Councilmember Budge.
So the luncheon, the monthly luncheon this, this month entertains our Senator Roger Nilo, and Roger was great, just the way he always is. This is a man who could have stayed in private life and continued to be a part of his family's automobile dealerships and instead chose to sort of put his time where his mouth was. And, but the best thing that he had to say of all was that even though Caltrans says that Highway 50 is not going to formally be fixed before next year, on the other hand, he said all the stupid lane changes should be finished by the end of this year. So we can all just know where we're supposed to go and not try to guess at the last minute, which I think will be a huge benefit to everybody. Diane is absolutely right. Congratulations to the Chamber of Commerce for having grown in a marvelous event. And not only were there, I think she said, 96 vendors, but also significant number of people just wandering around. You can, you can put on a trade show, but if they're not people there to, to have a good time and learn what the people in the trade show want you to learn or to take advantage of, then that, that doesn't quite work out. So they really had a great turnout. Attended an opening for a new restaurant, Jade Restaurant, behind Burger King, finally got themselves open. When I was president of Chamber of Commerce, I loved ribbon cuttings and grand openings because it's like you invite all of your aunts and uncles and cousins and friends and neighbors and whatnot, and everybody comes out and celebrates, and I believe we should ask city staff if they thought the food was good, because everybody who was there from the city went over and had lunch afterwards. And yes, congratulations to everyone who participated in the Fourth of July. There certainly have been so many lovely photos that have come out, and everybody had such a good time, and there's a couple of videos that, that just people in Rancho Cordova made and really celebrated. Everybody who was there and all the bands and all the little kids dancing and the flags and everything, and it was the absolute best of a hometown parade. So we really celebrated the Fourth of July in fine style.
Thank you. Voice Mayor Garrett.
Voice Mayor Garrett here. Voice Mayor, nice. I had a, thank you to the Cordova Community Council, they always do an amazing Fourth of July fireworks show, best in the region. I actually got called from some cities up north, they asked if they could start soliciting and bringing their citizens down here because their fireworks blew up, which I didn't even think that was possible, but they didn't have fireworks shows in a lot of cities, and so they all came down to Rancho Cordova. So I wouldn't be surprised if you didn't gain an extra 20,000 people in the city.
Well, it sure took a long time for them all to get in.
Yeah, it was crazy. Then, great parade, have fun every year, getting yelled at by the cops for throwing candy at the children, but the kids have had the best time. I will, I guess, one of these times, they had great, it was great, because all they've run up, they get the suckers, the kids are having the best time ever. My mom is certain that it was more children than she's ever seen, ever, alongside, and now people show up with bags, which is, when I first did the parade, people didn't show up with bags. Now they have bags waiting for the stuff to be thrown to them, and they wanted to know why Davin didn't hand out rulers and pencils like he's supposed to. And he didn't walk, and so everyone was shocked by this. It's mostly because he's working out too much nowadays, but I'm telling you right now, they wanted you in the streets. If you didn't know this, we have a carpentry academy graduates from the BIA, which is great, because those are more lower disadvantaged individuals that come out of Cordova High and some of the other places in there. They go to that place, it's a great place for them to get not only educated in how to be a carpenter, but if they don't want to go into the trades, they are into carpentry trade, they will then help them to get another job. So it's just another great work program. I'm hoping that they can work with our schools to help our kids get jobs. Diane, amazing. I was one of the original people that happened to have a business in the 25, when we were 25 people in the corner making lumpia. Now I'm 90-plus, and people come looking for lumpia, which I find hilarious, and it's so much burning that now, it started out as, fun story, my wife was seven months pregnant, and I came to her and I was like, hey, I need something that's going to draw people in so I can pitch my business. And she's like, okay. And I was like, I need you to make lumpia. And she's like, when do you need them by? I was like, tomorrow. So she was super pregnant, she called all the aunties from South SAC, and they drove up and they rolled 400 lumpia. And she said, if I ever do this again, that'll be the last lumpia I ever have in my life. But she now, she deemed them lumpia leads. And so they were great, and every time I make lumpia now, they were great, they were delicious. And now I have to rent a restaurant out, and I'm not allowed to wreck the kitchen, but I did hand off, and my son came and helped me fry lumpia this time, and he was talking about how hard it is, and I just laughed and patted him, and I said, yep, lumpia leads. You were born with lumpia leads, hon. So that was awesome. Diane, great job. Interesting thing, which I'll probably have to get David's help on, the cable commission is closing, and I've never closed a commission before. And there's a bunch of resources that are now loose in the community that are looking for homes. So like PBS and that station is now looking for a place to set up, which would be great in a community facility that could use a bunch of TV equipment and work with our schools to do some sort of education for news reporting, but they are going to lose their home because there's no place for them to land. And I would, and, and the funding in general is completely gone because it was attached to cable, and no one uses cable anymore to watch TV, use cable to stream. And so since that funding is going down to nothing, we, you know, I've never shut down one of these commissions, but it's time, and it doesn't make sense because it's, it's completely defunct at this point.
Cordova High has a video program. Josh Krieger runs it.
Do you think they want a, more equipment or like a-
I don't know. I can give you a phone number for Josh.
I'll have to call him, and then we got to figure out, like, do, of this commission pieces as we break it up, because I think three or four of my commissions are at the point where it's almost time for them to go away. When you downgrade something and you kind of let it go, you know, what do you do with the public access for channels that are going to be there? Are we, are we trying to keep those going? Are we shrinking it down to one? Are we shrinking it down to one because we can afford one? Are all the different cities going to kick in to pay for this one channel? And that's where we're going to stream because we're, our videos are on those channels and, and, and they're just not affordable anymore. And so, you know, I know you've had experience in turning down something, but we're all kind of trying to get into that location.
Yeah, I think Vice Mayor, if, you know, we can have a kind of follow-up conversation. If we get too deep in the conversation, this is.
Maybe it's good for like, maybe it's good for like, bring it back and we can talk about it. And then I get all the ideas. And lastly, had ad hoc with CRPD. Good news is the soccer fields are ready for this year. So we're hoping to have a great soccer season in the city of Rancho Cordova, uh, stomping everybody, doing amazing stuff. And that's it.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I attended the graduation for M Bark, which is a minority business assistance program that is run by the Rancho Cordova Chamber with support from the Asian Chamber. We had a lot of folks who had not idea about how to run a business. This is a 10-week, uh, course, um, that we also give a stipend for those who graduate through this program. And we had a lot of new and enthusiastic folks that went through the program, really excited to start their business here in Rancho Cordova. As Vice Mayor Gatewood mentioned, myself and Vice Mayor attended the CRPD Subcommittee meeting, ad hoc meeting. They did talk about, um, the dog park that's going to come up on White Rock Road, the cricket fields that are going to come out on.
Most exciting part is the cricket fields. So all our Pacific Islander community and Asian Indian community that loves cricket, we have a field coming. It's going to be fire. It's, it comes with everything you need. I think there's a diamond there and some sort of thing you hit that way, and then you run back and forth. I don't really understand why bowling's there, but you hit a pin down. Just remember, USA took second in the world, USA.
Do crickets eat mosquitoes?
Yeah. But they feed the birds. That's the good news. The birds will be fed.
Um, we also talked about the feasibility study for Mather Sports Center and the center property, which was the old gun range, um, here in Rancho Cordova. And what, after the feasibility study, we'll know what, what we can bring into those two areas. Uh, I attended the June ITC meeting where we talked about the latest broadband bead guidance and also about the policy amendments and resolutions that this committee can undertake. A huge congratulations to the Cordova Community Council for putting on a spectacular July 4th celebrations. I got like, um, Councilmember Sander mentioned, I got to get up on a Ferris wheel all by myself at 6:00 AM. You know, and we talked about the wonderful food trucks that are going to be open, all the festivities and the fireworks. And it was, it was a wonderful two days of media and celebrations. So had a blast leading up to my birthday, which is why I was like, I need to relax on my birthday. And with that is the end of my report, and I will pass it on to City Manager.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, just, uh, have a lot of gratitude today for all the different events and different things that are happening and the recognition for our, our city teams and facilities and, um, the, you know, public works team who responded to the, the trash pickup and all of those pieces. But I think that's through our partners and through all the volunteers in the community that make all of those things happen. So, uh, really just thankful for that. And then, uh, really, I probably should report out that I believe the Chinese food restaurant, the Jade Restaurant was very good is what the report back, the, from the team. So, um, so really appreciate, uh, the team going out there and having a nice meal, um, and, and celebrate the opening there. Uh, just a reminder, this, uh, we don't have a meeting, uh, the second meeting in July. So we are dark for the second meeting. So, uh, this is our last meeting for July. So with that, thank you.
This is the last official on dais meeting. Please make sure you say that. He has us coming every week.
Every, every day, every day, uh, Mayor.
Uh, with that, we move on to consent calendar items, and I'm going to ask Adam if we have any.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On, uh, item number, uh, 9.12, um, uh, Councilmember Gatewood will be recusing himself. Councilmember Gatewood does, um, has long, uh, done some consulting services for that, uh, entity and has a conflict of interest under the Fair Politic, uh, under the Political Reform Act. And for, uh, Government Code Section 1090 purposes, he has a remote interest, given the long tenure of service to that entity. Um, and so he'll be.
Which one?
Recusing from that on.
9.12. Consent calendar items consist of matters deemed routine and non-controversial by staff. Unless a member of the council wishes to pull an item for individual consideration, all items will be approved by one motion.
I can move every 9.1 to 9.11, skip 912, 913 to 917.
And if there's no public comment?
Could we also discuss 9.3?
Okay, let's pull out 9.3 as well.
Public comment?
We have no public comment for the items on the consent calendar.
Okay.
So do we have a motion in the second?
Yeah.
Okay.
So the motion is by Vice Mayor Gatewood.
Skipping 93 and 912.
Okay, so we're going to pull 93 and 912. Uh, do we have a second?
I do.
Thank you. Roll call is Councilmember Little.
Yep.
Councilmember Budge.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gatewood.
Yep.
Councilmember Sander.
Aye.
Mayor Pulapati.
Yes.
Thank you.
So I'm going to have, um.
We do, I'll step out, do the 12, and then come back and call me back in.
Okay. I'll have the clerk announce the subject for the item pulled.
The item pulled is 9.12, a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute contract number 2025-85 with Sierra Asphalt Inc. in an amount not to exceed $925,701.00 for on-call pavement maintenance services.
And I'll move, I'll move approval of item 9.12.
Second.
Roll call is Councilmember Budge.
Yes.
Councilmember Sander.
Aye.
Councilmember Little.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gatewood is recusing himself. Mayor Pulapati.
Yes. Can we ask Vice Mayor to come back in?
He should have finished the cookie.
Oh, it's all good. Happy birthday to you, Sherry.
Thank you.
There's some, some other thing in there.
Some other things?
What is the, what is the, um, the breaded thing? The, the Indian thing that you eat?
How many Indian events have you gone to to not know what you're eating? Really?
Great. Simosa. I knew I knew it. Thank you.
You need to help me with that. I had that. Was on top of that one.
Back to item 9.3.
We should probably read the subject of 9.3.
The subject is annual compliance review of development agreements.
So it was a, a couple of years ago, we had, um, sort of revel, revelation that we hadn't done annual reviews in writing for all of our development agreements. So I'm just seeking confirmation that this is a fully up-to-date list that I'm looking at in Attachment 1, and that all of our development agreements are represented here and have had their annual reviews and are in compliance or satisfied or expired.
Good evening. I'm Rachel Tren, a senior analyst for, um, community development. So yes, um, this is a complete, um, status list for all the DAs that we have in place currently.
So nothing, nothing excluded and everything is at this point up to date?
Yes.
Okay.
And I would simply add for the record, there, there were a lot of DA compliance reviews done. Um, it wasn't that there were never DA review, compliance done. You also periodically heard from the public statement made that was incorrect, which was DAs are invalid if they, um, are not done, compliance reviews are not done. There is a section in every DA the city's ever written that specifically says the opposite of that. But we're happy to be back on track and, uh, fully up to speed with planning, working on this on a regular basis going forward.
So the language is something like we require an annual review, but if it's not done, nothing changes.
It's, it's not, it doesn't.
Yep.
Impact the validity of the contract.
But it is nice to have them annually done.
Yeah, and I think that's the goal moving forward is to, um, you know, be consistent with that approach.
All right, very good. With that, I'll move the item if there's no other comments or questions.
Second.
Councilmember Sander.
Aye.
Councilmember Budge.
Yes.
Councilmember Little. Vice Mayor Gatewood.
Yep.
Mayor Pulapati.
Yes. We move on to consent. Public hearing items. Consent public hearing items consist of matters deemed routine and non-controversial by staff. Unless a member of the council wishes to pull an item for individual consideration, all items will be approved by one motion. I'm going to open the public hearing. And as the city clerk, if we have any public comment?
We do not have any public comment.
I'm going to close the public hearing. And are there any items that the council wishes to pull?
Hearing none. I'll move approval of nine, uh, 10.1 and 10.2.
Was that Councilmember Little? Thank you. Uh, we'll start the roll call vote with Councilmember Little. Councilmember Budge.
Yes.
Councilmember Sander.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Gatewood.
Yep.
Mayor Pulapati.
Yes.
Excellent.
With that, we move on to public hearing items, and they are none. So we'll move to regular calendar items, and I'll ask the city clerk to announce a subject.
The first subject is 12.1, a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute contract number 2025-170 with Soilborne Farms Urban Agriculture Project for an amount not to exceed $150,000 per year for general operating support and authorizing the city manager to execute contract amendment number 2024-229-1 with Soilborne Farms to increase the contract amount from $513,778 to an amount not to exceed $723,778 for the construction of the animal barn project at the American River Ranch.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Council, and guests. I am Stacy Delaney with the City Manager's Office. I will not repeat everything that Stacy Lightner just said. We are here tonight to present information on two contracts. One is an amendment to an agreement, and the other is a new two-year operational support agreement with Soilborne Farms. These items went to council for approval in June as part of the operating budget. So you did adopt the operating budget and funding allocation for those two projects. But I'm going to go over the specifics tonight so you know what's included in the contracts and the expectations of those. Um, as I mentioned, the operating agreement is a two-year agreement. It starts this July 1 and goes through June 30. It supports their general operations, which can include things such as additional staffing for their capacity building, enhanced marketing efforts, day-on-the-farm events. They're going to do some strategic planning services with a consultant. They're going to add wayfinding signage and things such as that. Um, this is $150,000 a year for two consecutive fiscal years. They will be required to submit bi-annual reports and present information on their outcomes and the metrics that they collect. So they will have to report on any new programs that they launch or activities that they offer at the ranch as a result of our funding, um, additional marketing campaigns and what the analytics are for those. They'll need to include the in Rancho Cordova tagline as part of their marketing efforts. They will report out on any new signage that they install, and they may do some qualitative data focusing on what are their experiences post and or pre and post signage being installed. They, we will have a seat on the board of directors for Soilborne Farms. And then there will be various community benefits that we'll be looking to, um, realize, such as what are the number of paid teen employment opportunities that are available on the farm? How many field trips were offered for Rancho Cordova students free of charge? What are the school garden developments and instructions that they provided? Do they have any free or discounted classes and what are those available to Rancho Cordova residents? If they do a specific Rancho Cordova, Cordova Day on the Farm, they'll report on that. And lastly, they'll report on any free gardening supplies or things like that given to residents throughout the reporting period. In terms of the amendment to the agreement, council had previously approved $513,778 for the animal barn project taking place there at the American River Ranch. Due to the increased cost associated with construction projects and based upon the four qualified bids that they received, we are increasing the allocation to $723,778, so a difference of $210,000. The overall project cost, as you can see, is approximately 2.9 million. So the city's contribution is approximately 25% of the total project cost. They're also receiving substantial funding from the Wildlife Conservation Board. This is the only change to the agreement. We're not changing the terms of like the date range. We're not changing the project scope, and we're not changing the reporting requirements. So this evening, I'm just looking for you to adopt the resolution, which will allow us to move forward with the operating agreement for the next two fiscal years as well as the increased funding for the animal barn project. And then we'll immediately move forward with executing the operating agreement and the amendment. And unless you have specific questions, that concludes the presentation this evening.
Stacy, quick question. Quick question. We're coming up with 210, right? And you said there was somebody else that's going to match those funds? Are they, is it like across four character, four folks who are providing the money and we're giving 200 and?
So we are increasing our contribution by 210,000. The Wildlife Conservation Board, their contribution is over 2 million, but they also gave like an additional $200,000 because the delta was more than.
So they're just two partners in this city and?
Wildlife Conservation Board. And Soilborne Farms might have some other smaller donors, but that's the substantial donors, yes.
So 2.2 and 750?
Yes.
Okay.
So a quick question. Um, someone from city staff will be the person on the board?
Yes.
Good.
I'm going to open it up for public comments, and then we can go back to the colleagues. Any public comment?
The city clerk's office has not received any public comment.
Okay, colleagues? Any questions, concerns? No?
I don't think so.
Are you, did you pick up the animals from CRPD yet and move them over?
There's no place to put them. And besides, um, we just saw pictures of people painting the animal barn over by live steamers.
Yeah, the sheep, the rabbits, and the chickens will come after the animal barn is constructed and the new pens are in place.
Nice. All right.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
I will move approval of the item.
Second.
Councilmember Budge.
Yes.
Council, uh, Vice Mayor Gatewood.
Yep.
Councilmember Little. Councilmember Sander.
Aye, and bonus points if we get to drive heavy equipment.
Mayor Pulapati.
Yes.
No bonus points for me, Sean.
You can, you can go pick up.
Correction, everybody.
You can go pick up the sheep and the goats.
Listen, I only crashed into one wall. You guys have to get over that.
Stacy, can you announce the outcome of the vote?
The item passes with a 5-0 vote.
We're going to move on to the next agenda item, and I'll have the city clerk announce a subject.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with the Rancho Cordova Food Locker in the amount of $1,100,000 for operating support through June 30, 2030.
We have Kim with the staff report.
Help if I turn my microphone on. Good evening. Kim Dray and Cara Giorgio, Administrative Services Director. And I just have a couple of brief slides to go over this evening to highlight, uh, this item. So, uh, just for those who may be unfamiliar, the Rancho Cordova Food Locker has been providing emergency food support to the Rancho Cordova community for over 35 years. And the city, uh, for at least the last six to seven years, has been a financial supporter of the food locker and did support the food locker through some of their efforts to, uh, do, um, a strategic plan and eventually onboard a new executive director, Carrie Johnson, who is with us this evening. And then, uh, most recently, we have given them an American Rescue Plan Act funds to help sustain and continue that operating support, um, as they kind of move into bigger endeavors. Uh, on, at the budget work session on May 14th, the Rancho Cordova Food Locker, uh, did come and make a formal request of $2.2 million of financial support from the city. Uh, and that was to fill the gap, um, that they had between, in their ability to start working on the Rancho Cordova Community Food Hub Construction Project. Uh, so there was some discussion and prioritization. And at that same meeting, uh, we received council, majority of council indicated support for up to 50% of that request in the amount of $1.1 million. Thank you. So the contract this evening. So the contract this evening, uh, looks a little bit differently than, uh, direct capital contribution support. The proposed contract, uh, before you would provide financial support for additional support for operations over the next five years, uh, in the amount of two hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year. So again, that gets us to that one point one million dollar figure that we discussed. And this additional operating support allows the Rancho Cordova Food Locker to really kind of focus in on fundraising efforts to find donor support and donor contributions for the construction of the Community Food Hub Project. And the reason for this kind of move and the shift in this direction is that if the city were to contribute dollars towards the construction of the Community Food Hub Project, it would completely change the dynamic of how that project gets built. Um, it would trigger additional costs as well as, uh, kind of extend the time burdens and the ability to open the doors. So the thought is that this would be a better approach, uh, to providing support would be to sustain their operations and let them kind of focus in on the fundraising, uh, for the actual capital item, uh, that they're, uh, in the process of constructing. So with that, uh, there is a resolution before the council this evening to approve the contract, uh, in the amount of one point one million dollars, uh, through 2030. And I'm happy to answer any questions, as well as Carrie Johnson from the Food Locker is here.
Thank you. City Clerk, do we have any public comment?
We do not have any public comment for this item.
Okay, I'm going to ask the council for any comments or questions.
Hearing none, I'll move approval of the item.
Second.
Vice Mayor Gatewood.
Yes.
Councilmember Budge.
Yes.
Councilmember Little.
Yep.
Uh, Councilmember Sander.
Aye.
Mayor Pulapati.
We're going to go on to agenda item twelve point three and I'm going to ask the City Clerk to please announce a subject.
A resolution authorizing the City Manager to execute a memorandum of understanding contract number two zero two five dash nine nine in an amount not to exceed eight hundred and twenty-five thousand with Sacramento Metro Fire District to contribute to Squad sixty-one from July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2026.
City Manager, do you have the staff report?
Uh, thank you, Mayor and Council. Uh, this could be the, uh, report back from the May 14th, uh, council study session night as a lot of these are related to direction and, and conversations that we had with the, with all of you. Uh, the last one is the support for the Sacramento Metro Fire, uh, MOU. Sac Metro Fire submitted a formal request, uh, to fund Squad sixty-one in '25, '26 fiscal year. Um, this was a squad that, uh, had been funded through grant funding, um, and that grant funding was going away. And there was a request to continue this operation, uh, functioning out of sixty-one to provide an enhanced level of service and protection and emergency services for, uh, for the station and for the community. The Squad sixty-one, uh, consists of six firefighters, uh, working two-day shifts, uh, two firefighters per shift, um, includes a type five engine grass rig, uh, designed specifically for wildland firefighting. Um, this was included, uh, one year of this contract was included in, uh, this last year's budget based on the direction that, uh, we were given at the May 14th meeting. Uh, and basically the eight hundred and twenty-five thousand was splitting the total cost of, of that with, uh, with Metro Fire. So part of the MOU terms, uh, through our conversations with Metro Fire that we, um, had in putting this, uh, agreement together was this is for a one-year period, um, starting July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, uh, 2026. And this supports half of the cost, um, per the direction of the council to fund sixty-one costs, um, not to exceed eight hundred and twenty-five thousand. Uh, we'll receive quarterly reports, uh, that include overview of Squad sixty-one's operations, key metrics and data, response time, call volume, call distribution, um, things that show kind of the impact to the community. Um, and then trend and analysis as well for, um, what does the squad do for, for the community and for the area that it provides? And then impact assessment. Uh, Squad sixty-one will also be available to come to community events, uh, when arranged in advance for Good Neighbor Days and, um, and those sorts of things. So with that, um, the agreement is, uh, before you, uh, to adopt the resolution approving the MOU with, uh, Sac Metro Fire. And we have, um, Chief House and team here to provide any questions that you may have for them as well.
Thank you. Do we have any public comment?
We do not have any public comment for this item.
Going to go back to council for comments or questions?
None unless the chief has something to say.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. It's my pleasure to be here in Rancho Cordova. As you know, my history is in Rancho Cordova and, uh, I truly appreciate the collaboration and partnerships, long-lasting with the Fire Department. We are your Fire Department. This is, this is good for the community. We talk about stuff like drawdown. This is keeping a primary apparatus for the right call with the right piece of apparatus. Uh, this partnership is enhancing a higher level of service, which we've seen not only tonight with your presentations, but every time I come to the city of Rancho Cordova, you expect a greater degree of reliability, service and support for the community you serve. So I appreciate the collaboration and I, I, um, encourage you to support this tonight. Thank you very much. Open to any other questions? And my team is here if we have any other questions.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
I'm happy to, um, move approval of the resolution for Squad sixty-one.
Second.
Have the City Clerk, please call a roll for this.
Vice Mayor Gatewood.
Yes.
Councilmember Budge.
Yes.
Councilmember Sander.
No.
Councilmember Little.
No.
Mayor Pulapati. The motion passes with a three-two vote.
Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate the support.
Thank you for your service. We move on to council requests for future agenda items. Do we have any requests for future agenda items?
Yes, I would like to request two items.
Hold on, so yes?
Yes.
Anybody else? Okay.
No, I just had a question for Micah. Is when we can expect the fireworks aftermath report? I don't think I have to move. I just want to know when that's coming.
Yeah, so, uh, typically, you know, within the, the month or two, we provide a report on kind of the activities and, um, kind of the enforcement, which I think you're getting to is the enforcement of the illegal fireworks. And a part of that conversation, I think we'll also have conversations about any kind of adjustments that we'll make, um, moving forward. So that's kind of already on the list for a future agenda item that we'll talk about.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to have, um, I'd like to bring up, I'd like to have a, a meeting on a code of conduct.